Uh, let's see here. General items number fourteen. Competitive procurement of um solid waste recycling and organic material collection services. Presented by uh Steve Crager, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Um, on September fifth, your council approved. Uh retaining the services of Sloan Vasquez McAfee to develop a uh an RFP. For a competitive procurement process for solid waste services. That um has been done. In terms of them handling the timeframe, uh they've assembled a an RFP that is brought before you this evening for consideration. Inclusive as part of that document is a draft franchise agreement. Um, there are individuals from Sloan Vasquez McAfee here with us this evening. Uh specifically um Carissa McAfee and Sue Vaccaro who are here in the audience. I'll ask Carissa to come up momentarily. And give a brief overview of some of the decision points within that request for proposals. I think it's important to note that um that your council has been div- divided as to whether or not. To go forward with a negotiation or procurement process, but that said. Uh this evening is a very important part of any process. Uh meaning this is the part of the service design of solid waste uh for the future. Uh so no matter what uh someone's perspective might be, you all have a common interest. In what that service design will be for the future of Yuba City. Uh included in in part of the uh documents are certain new and enhanced services. Uh frankly, some of these services are already provided by our current provider. Uh it's not included in their contract, but Recology has been um always uh there for us and frankly in a time of need. So with that, I'd ask uh Carissa McAfee to come forward. To discuss uh some of the decision points and provide you with a a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having us here tonight. Um I'm Carissa McAfee with Sloan Vasquez McAfee and I'm joined by Sue Vaccaro. Our role in this process is to provide the best information possible and recommendations for your consideration. And then to take your direction and move forward and implement the process as directed by the council, and we look forward to doing that. Uh we provide, we've prepared a few slides with some information and then we're prepared to answer any questions that that you might have. We're recommending a residential rate structure that includes a single cart. Uh and then for garbage and one cart for recyclables and one cart for green waste. And then the first additional recyclable cart and the first additional green waste cart would be provided. Um upon request of the customer at no additional charge. Any additional garbage carts and two or more additional recyclable or green carts would be provided at an additional rate. There've been a lot of questions about how to right-size carts, what what size carts should we have? When the current contract was put in place, it was during a time when pay-as-you-throw was a very. Popular and thought to be an effective strategy, um where you price according to a a policy versus cost-based pricing. So you have the thirty-two gallon cart be the least costly cart. And then hopefully incentivize folks to use that cart and and restrict the amount of weekly refuse they have to thirty-two gallons. Otherwise, pay a much larger rate for the sixty-four or ninety-six gallon cart. We're recommending moving away from pay-as-you-throw to a ready-for-service type strategy. There's a few reasons for this. First, uh it's been shown over time that pay-as-you-throw hasn't been as effective as as once thought. One of the key issues is the amount of contamination that occurs inside of the recyclable and the green waste carts. Um, there is typically a need for a much larger cart than a thirty-two gallon cart for families. Also, you have events throughout the year where um there may be additional waste. And folks just typically don't like to keep garbage or kitchen waste. In the garage for a week and wait for the next week to put it into the trash cart when there's room. Typically, it goes wherever the space is available, a green waste cart or recycling cart. The issue with this is that say ten or twenty percent of the customers on route. Put their trash into a green waste or recycling cart. That can contaminate the entire load. It reduces the value of the recyclables. Sometimes it causes entire loads to be rejected. And over the past few years, there's been a lot of pushback from China, which is the main place where co-mingled recyclables end up. Um it the Green Wall, the National Sword, these programs are are increasing the um level of scrutiny on the purity of the recyclables. And with that, you see the prices going down, um and the costs for processing contaminated recyclables is much higher. Than for processing those that that don't have trash co-mingled with them. So we recommend having enough space to accommodate the maximum amount of trash that a family would have. On their largest trash week. That'd be during the holidays or um family barbecue or parties or whatever the case may be. It's better to have space left over some weeks of the year, but have adequate space when they need it. Than on those weeks for the trash to be placed in the recyclable or the green waste container. There is an incremental difference in the cost of carts, say going from a sixty-four to a ninety-six gallon cart. But when those costs are amortized over the term of a ten-year contract, it's pennies difference. That really isn't the cost. The cost is the the actual service of the truck coming out, collecting the the material. Um, that's anywhere from sixty-five to seventy-five percent of the cost. Then you also have the the cost of disposal. And folks typically are consistent in what what they produce. Now whether they cram it into a thirty-two gallon volume can. The weight is the same as if they placed three or four bags into a ninety-six gallon cart. So for those reasons, we're recommending that the default size be a ninety-six gallon cart. And that for those who prefer to have a smaller cart due to size constraints, that they are able to request that, but that they're not be a lower rate. Because once you introduce introduce a lower rate, as has been shown um throughout the community. Um, there's a disproportionate use of the smaller cart that does not match up to the needs um or right-size to the needs of the community. Again, the high-volume weeks, um all the holidays, anytime folks have people over or additional materials, spring cleaning, move-outs, there's there's a lot of reasons why. Um, maybe even just once a month, there's additional waste and you want to make sure that the carts that are on hand accommodate that. That way, the recyclables are clean, they're of value, and they actually count towards diversion. I know there've been some questions about could um could diversion rates actually go backwards? Maybe people won't recycle at all. If they have a huge trash cart. Typically, people who recycle continue to recycle. Um, what you alleviate is the folks who are placing their trash into the recyclable container. You you get rid of that contamination and you have cleaner loads. Additionally, in the contract that we're recommending and in most contracts, the onus is on the service provider to push for the diversion rate. So if for any reason there was a blip in diversion, it would be on the service provider to provide the outreach, education. Et cetera, to ensure that there was an ongoing commitment to diversion in the community. There was also a question about why um when we're looking at cart rates, why there are two separate rates for residential carts versus commercial carts. Um, I I know it's um it's it seems counterintuitive that there be two separate rates, but I I wanted to provide some information about why it's different. The the largest component of cost is getting the truck out there, the truck, the driver, the the time between each stop. When you're dealing with a neighborhood or with residential households, you can do as many, you know, it's like ninety to a hundred and twenty households on average. That you can do in an hour. So the cost of that service is distributed among all of those customers. When you have a commercial cart, you know, imagine pulling into one shopping center and then getting out and there's the light and you have to drive to another. Um, you know, tire shop or wherever, there's gonna be at least ten minutes between services. So typically, the maximum amount that you could, service you could provide to customers is six different stops. So you're dividing the cost of that hour among six customers versus ninety to a hundred and twenty customers. So that's the the reason that there is a difference. Also, typically, you don't have a reduced rate for additional commercial carts because. Commercial carts aren't intended, carts aren't intended for commercial customers. Really, if there's more than the need for one cart, you're wanting the customer to go to a weekly bin. Either through property management company or through um right-sizing with with their other services. So that is the rationale for residential carts. This process is truly at the discretion of the city council. The way that the RFP is written, the way that the agreement is written, and the way that the state laws are set up. Give you the sole ability to decide how you want to award this contract. We've established some evaluation criteria and some weighting, um that's designed specifically for this city. And we recommend that this is a good tool that would be used as we bring forward recommendations to you. However, your choice will look at the entire package. Which of these proposers and proposals offer the best value and meet the needs of the rate payers as you see fit? So you will retain the ability throughout this process to select whomever you believe provides services in the best interest of the city. Um, this does give us a framework for discussing and comparing the um proposals, and that's important. But um it is truly your process and um you're able to be in the driver's seat throughout. With that said, um, this process. At this point, is really about your input and your direction. To the components of the RFP, the weighting of the evaluation, um what what the service is, what service you'd like to see in the city. For those who are participating in this process, the proposers, there's built-in um opportunities for them. Throughout the process to provide feedback. In fact, there's really three key points where proposers um get to provide feedback. First of all, there's an opportunity to provide, to ask questions. And for all of the questions to be reviewed and all proposers get all answers to all questions. There may be simple answers to questions. There might be a small change that is considered by the city. And so an addenda is is put forward or multiple, um but that's that's one area. The second opportunity for um really proposer input is there's an option for an alternative proposal. So if a a proposer has an idea that's outside of what has been requested in the RFP. They have the opportunity through an alternative proposal to, after responding to what we've asked for, to say, hey, but we have this great idea. Or we have these great assets, or whatever the case may be, and we think this is in the best interest of the city, and here's what we can do with them for your consideration. Then the city has the option to consider that or not. It's at the city's discretion. Finally, as part of this process, there's an opportunity for proposers to have um to give input on the agreement. So if there are any um exceptions to what's being asked for in the agreement. They are given actually a word copy of the agreement document and they're able to redline and say. We believe that this would be in the best interest, or these are the reasons for such, and here's the language that we propose. Again, completely at the city's discretion, whether to consider that change or not. Um, I've seen proposers have zero exceptions. I've seen proposers have a hundred exceptions. It just depends on the process and the proposer. And I've seen cities consider one or two changes, or cities say, nope, this is this is what we want and this is what we've decided. With all of that said, there's just a significant amount of flexibility because the goal isn't the process. The goal is the outcome, to have the best possible service. That you have the ability to choose that and consider all options um once they are put forward. So that's a little bit about the process. And with that, um, we're able to take any questions that you may have.
At this time, are there any questions? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I just ask a uh Ms. McAfee to provide two clarifications to you. Um, one is she touched upon the cart size. Uh, the staff report set forth a cart size of. Um, sixty-four for the uh gray can and then the ninety-six for the blue and the green. Now those being maximums, people could go lower. The concern of of staff uh is that we don't want people. Um, throw, uh not recycling. We want to encourage recycling. Counterpoint that has been presented by Sloan Vasquez, which seems to be fairly compelling, is. Uh even worse is when that one or two people are throwing their garbage into the blue can. You want zero incentive to do that because the high contamination causes problems for a whole load of recycling. So that's one decision point for you to decide whether or not you just say, okay, well, let's do ninety-six across the board. Just to be clear, that's the recommendation of your consultant. Secondly, um staff did receive a a letter, actually I did, uh from uh Mike Leggins from Ecology, who's in the audience this evening. And he touched upon a certain concerns that they have or just observations, quite, you know, comments, observations with regard to the RFP. And I want to, and they also asked for uh the process to be delayed a bit for those um questions to be responded to. And I wanted that also from her uh perspective, handling these processes, we don't do this. That's why we've brought in the professionals. How that might be handled uh as well. So one is more something, pardon me, in your arena with regard to cart size. And the other, if you don't mind, I'd ask her to provide that clarification before you proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is our opinion that that there's no need to delay. Um, there there is a built-in process for considering input from from proposers and that is handled throughout um the RFP process. So um really, this is, this is an opportunity for us to receive direction um from the city. And um then there will be other opportunities if something's brought forward that's compelling, that you certainly will continue to have the option. Of um choosing other options.
Any comments on regards to that from council members at this time?
Yeah, through the mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to discuss cart size. Um, your suggestion uh uh is, you know, the ninety-six sixty-fours and. Right now, you know, your your standard fee is the way it's set up, but I'm a seventy-five-year-old senior citizen, single. And I don't need a sixty-four yard uh toter. And they have a reduced, they 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 do a reduced rate. They don't give the maximum rate. So why would I want to give you top dollar for something that I don't need to use when right now I can get a discount when I don't use the same, you know, a large dumpster? Or excuse me, a toter. I'm not using a large toter. When, why would you suggest that, that you they, you're not allowed to give a discount if you use a smaller toter? Especially for senior citizens in the community that are on a fixed income.
Excellent question, and I believe a question that many, many citizens would have. We're changing philosophies. So currently, you're paying a premium for a thirty-two gallon cart. If you look at the comparison with with other cities that are um on a ready-to-serve basis versus a pay-as-you-throw basis. So the majority of your residents are paying for a thirty-two gallon cart. And you may recall back when this contract first started, um the rates had to be adjusted higher because. Uh, a disproportionate number of residents opted to have the thirty-two gallon cart. When in reality, it should be a small portion of the residents having a thirty-two gallon cart. But because there was such a a large difference between the rates, the majority of folks selected that thirty-two gallon cart. Now to your point, why should you pay more? There's, there's two components. First, we're suggesting moving to a ready-to-serv basis where regardless of the size of cart that you have. You're paying for the the hauler to come out and be ready to serve that size of of cart. The the bulk of the cost is in the service delivery versus the the weight. And the truth is, I know that the weight within the thirty-two gallon volume carts exceeds what is expected. There's more than usually the three tall kitchen bags. Those are the ten gallon bags that are going into um most of the carts in the community. So really, you're you're having the same weight. It's just in a different volume container, a different, a larger size so that you have room. For your trash and and it doesn't go in with the recyclables. Now as far as the senior citizen rate, that's a policy decision. And there's certainly an opportunity for the council to direct us to um add a senior citizen rate. Where if you are a certain age or um in other jurisdictions, there's a senior citizen fixed income um rate. So that's certainly something you could consider. However, if you continue with a pay-as-you-throw, you'll continue to have the majority of residents picking the thirty-two gallon. And you'll go back to the same system that you have now where the bidders are going to have to propose the rate that they need to cover services for thirty-two gallon. And then you have the issues that are significant with the diversion, and that's going to affect um the the value. And the ability of a service provider to continue to provide recyclable um services as the laws in China or the regulations in China change. So we want to get away from the contamination and focus more on the cost of service versus the size of the cart.
Actually, on that senior discount, I actually did make a note on that part of the RFP um scope of work. I would like to propose that we add um a a senior discount or fixed in income. Due to the amount of garbage that they would provide so that that we can take care of that population as far as our senior citizens on fixed incomes.
I'm actually looking at the uh current low-income senior citizen rates that are on here, so. Anything else from anybody on these two uh main items? Yes, absolutely.
Just a couple of questions, ma'am. Um, given the opportunity to explain. Why you're not recommending that the proposers have an opportunity to comment now. All I really heard you say was that's your opinion that they not. Why is that, though?
There's a number of reasons. Um, first, this is about what the city is directing versus what the proposers prefer. And each proposer is going to have their own set of objectives that they seek to accomplish in having the RFP uh best match their service abilities. Second, it creates a um, creates a potentially legal problem for you because not all the proposers are here. And in a process, what we want to have is a single opportunity for all proposers to give, to provide questions. And then a single opportunity for us to provide answers to all proposers so that they all have the answers at the same time. And the same opportunity to provide that feedback. So our process is, it's intended to ensure consistency. And to avoid any type of situation where um some proposers have access to information. Or have influence and input and others do not. So it's, that's the the main reason.
Have we been informed of other proposers who may be out there or do we aware of any?
We have, we have a list of, goodness, eight to ten proposers that we plan to reach out to, to provide the RFP. Once it is fully approved by by the council and to invite them to come to the bidders conference. The bidders conference is mandatory for all proposers because of the complexity of this process and the the importance of them being here in the city. Um, following that, there's an opportunity for them to provide questions. And then it goes through a a standardized process so that we can be sure all the answers are accurate, that everyone has the same information. Um, and it, we we don't want to preclude any potential bidders because the more bidders you have, the um, the more competitive it is. Through the mayor?
Yes, unless you have another, just follow-up and.
Just, uh, I just want to emphasize that it no way will, uh. The validity of Recology's questions, comments, observations remain. They're no less less valid because they came in now, and in my opinion, if there's any reason why they came in now. It's because we enjoy a relationship with Recology, where in my conversations with Mike and with Dave Vaughn, I have said. If you have any questions or comments or observations, please offer them. Uh, so if they're not timely, it's because of the solicitation of the city manager and this relationship that we have here locally that we all enjoy. Uh, and I offered the same to recycling industries. Um, so the point that I've heard from uh Sloan Vasquez McAfee is. There's ample time to be able to address their concerns. It's built into the process. So it doesn't uh, it doesn't lessen their concerns. It doesn't give us less time to respond to their concerns. There's still ample opportunity as this process begins. And it also, of course, affords additional opportunity uh for uh both recycling industries and Recology. To um add additional questions uh beyond those that are have already been raised, so.
So we're, and we're gonna have an opportunity to hear from, I'm assuming, both of them. There's only two of them here today.
Uh, whomever wants to speak to this matter this evening, when you open it up for comment, that's fine.
All right, I will uh listen to what they have to say. Some of these things, and yes, we did just get it today, um, really seem to me to be very valid points. And I haven't received anything from Recycling Industries Republic, but I've I've ventured to guess that they may have some at least, if not some of the same, similar. Important things to bring up. I know I'm, I'm in a hard time wrapping my head around why we can't address them now. So when we have the RFP we agree upon, hopefully eventually. Um, when we move forward with the best possible product initially, rather than trying to tack on to it or erode it as we go through the process. If we can get a a good, solid product, um and everybody who who's aware of, I believe we only have two companies that took the time to be here tonight. Um, if they're all aware of, and you have a list. Way I'm thinking, I don't see the harm in waiting three weeks or so before we move forward to get some input from the, from uh. Another set of professionals from their point of view, um before we move on. But I will wait until I hear what they have to say. I may have more questions, but thank you.
Through the mayor.
Um, in regards to the contract processing, um, it's the first time I've actually seen a draft RFP. Ask for a scope of work to be conducted in this manner. Um, usually these are, if it's something that we're discussing as far as our scope of work and need to figure out all the details that we want as the city. It usually goes out as a closed RFP. Um, right now, as you indicated, not all the potential bidders are even here to have a say. Usually, that's not how the scope of work is put together. Usually, it's the the city or. The business who's looking for an RFP to go out to work out all the details and that be all done. And then it is released as an RFP to the potential bidders. Who then go through the process of having um the meeting to go over any questions regarding that RFP. And then if they continue to pursue forward with a complete bid. So this is a little different. Um, so I'm, I get what you're saying is this is for our input. Usually, in a scope of work, we're not looking for the bidders input at this, at this time. So even for this draft to be released in this manner, I'm kind of, I was a little confused when that was done. That's why I was kind of asking, is the draft already out there? So you might want to explain that because this is a little bit different than the typical bidding pro, competitive bidding process. Where the scope of work is not discussed with potential bidders prior to it being released.
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, we, uh, this is very different from a typical bid process. Um, usually because it's the largest contract that any city has. And industry standard practice and and in all of the the cities that we've worked with throughout the state. The scope of work, the RFP, is is released ahead of time because of the amount of input that's required. Um, and uh because typically there there is a need for there to be decisions regarding um the weighting, the size of the carts, those those sorts of pieces. And you're, you're correct that um this does create an opportunity for proposers to ask to offer input. And that always happens. Certainly, every incumbent in every city that I've ever worked in has come to this meeting and and attempted to make that that um occur. Here's, here's the reason why we are, we strongly urge the council to not seek input at this time. And that is because the the input as as um written, I I've reviewed the the letter. And those are standard questions that we would get in a typical process where questions are submitted to the consultant. By addressing those now, there's two issues. First, you could end up directing the RFP in the favor of. Of those who are asking the questions at this point. Because certainly, um, if changes were made as requested, it'd be in the favor of those asking those questions. Uh, so that's, that's one of the issues. The the second issue, and this goes into the overall process. Because of the complexity of the service, and because this is not a situation where there's five companies local. Who provide the same service on a regular basis and they can all come forward with a bid for the same thing. We have to provide flexibility. So, for example, some proposers might have assets local. That will allow them to have certain benefits from those assets. Others may not, but they could potentially have different labor agreements or different um rates for disposal, et cetera. Each of these players come to the table with their own set of pros and then their own set of cons. And it's up to them to put together the best total package based on what they have because they don't operate off of the same field. They each have different components. So the reason that the RFP is structured the way it is, is to allow the flexibility. And allow us to look at what's, what's the best that can be offered. That's why all alternate proposals are accepted typically. Someone could come in and say, you know what? You require all-new carts, and that's necessary to have an even playing field for apples-to-apples comparison. But um, we ended service in a city two years ago. We have a few hundred thousand sixty-four gallon carts. So we can reduce your rate by X amount. So we can reduce your rate by X amount if you allow us to use those carts instead of new ones. That's something you might want to consider. There's all any number of scenarios like that where when we look at the whole package, you're able to say, that's in the best interest. We're not going to be able to say, everyone has the exact same landfill, everyone has the exact same trucks. So that's, there are a lot of complexities and challenges, certainly. Um but tha- that's the reason why we and every consultant that is in this um industry does get council approval in a public process for the RFP, including scope of work. Because it is, as you said, very unusual for any other type of bid.
Yes.
Through the mayor. I have I have just a couple of questions on what can affect rates and um any input that you may have uh regarding um China's campaign on foreign garbage. Um it's concerning to me because of we move a tremendous amount of product from the US. Uh Europe moves quite a bit, so there's going to be uh potentially some uh massive flows maybe into some less developed countries that wouldn't build a handle uh the product coming. Uh but the ban on plastics uh from living sources, the unsorted waste paper, um and then the uh waste textile materials are basically the three big categories with various subcomponents of of each one of those. How uh do you see that affecting rates uh into now? That 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 ban takes place and is currently being in slowly enforced uh um in China? How do you see that affecting rates uh in regard to um recyclables? And what i- in a in a way to be more responsive to that, um do you see our collection process um maybe changing uh over a course of time to build a to uh directly respond to those rate changes?
You're absolutely right that over the next uh few years, things will change and they will continue to change as as regulations from China and other uh other countries come through. And then also, as there's new technologies to deal with and use the different materials. This is one of the main reasons why we recommend the larger waste cart is so that you can proactively work towards having cleaner recyclables that will be accepted. There was a time in the pay-as-you-throw philosophy where the thought was, if you're if in doubt, throw it in the cart. Um just i- you know, if there's any chance it could be recyclable, just throw it in, they'll pull it out if it's not. Well, the cost of processing and pulling out items that that are not, there's not a market for, is very high. And, you know, back in those days when when pay-as-you-throw was introduced, that's back when cities used to get huge rebates for recycling or they used to be um take a risk on getting monthly or annual payouts for some percentage, maybe fifty percent of the recycling revenue. And then when the green wall came from China, the you saw a big dip and you saw some haulers coming forward saying, uh you owe us money. We it's costing us to process. So um that didn't work out so well for for some cities that that had um a variable type rate. The way the RFP is is structured and the way the agreement is set up, the hauler takes the risk for those changes. We're moving away from a cost-plus approach where if there's changes or regulatory issues or facility issues, where the the hauler has an opportunity to ask for an increase in their revenue. That is no more with with this agreement approach. Uh we are saying to haulers, you know, um you know what to expect in the recycling uh industry and what your assets are and um your end sources for marketable materials and where they're going and um who you work with. Even looking at changes in law um like AB fifteen ninety-four, where the green waste that is currently, where you can currently use a certain amount of green waste as alternative daily color cover or ADC to cover at the end of the day at the landfill. Currently, that counts as diversion. In twenty twenty, it will no longer count as diversion. We bring that up to say, that's on you, proposer. You can't come back to the city and say, oh, the law changed or this happened and this is going to cost more. No, they need to figure it out and provide the solutions. Uh instead, the onus is on them to continue to meet the diversion rate that's required, to provide the services and to do all of that within an index-based rate adjustment process so that there's no surprises for the city. So that's the the purpose of that.
So with that, I mean, with your responses, and I I appreciate um how you responded to that, but nowhere that I read um kind of in this change of philosophy is any indication where there may be um to public interest a uh partnership between the the contracting uh agency, Uba City, and the proposer um to where we could have some shared responsibility in in what'll in what our recyclable uh process looks like. Um meaning um to to gain a higher compliance uh yeah in the process within our city. If we're going to take this seriously, that's part of uh reduction of potential o- ongoing costs for a proposer. So um my question would be, why would that be absent? Or would it be prudent to possibly consider that uh in a proposal?
This is a policy decision and it is certainly one that that is under your purview. Um there are um ordinances that could be put in place to cite contamination. Um there could be um any, there could be a requirement that proposers provide X number of staff hours to go out and and conduct education and to monitor um contamination levels and to address that. You can require as much as you would like or even say, we'd like to see you hit these benchmarks or these milestones in achieving higher diversion rates. And proposers will come up with a program and um materials and and manpower and ask for for different support. With each of these steps, there's additional costs. So it comes down to um your current program meets the requirements and and takes in all of the um the different regulations, AB three forty-one, which is commercial recycling, eighteen twenty-six, which is organics, and requires the um successful implementation of those programs. That's the low-hanging fruit. After that, there's other opportunities for diversion, but the cost is higher, significantly higher the the further you go up. Um it's uh an inverse type situation. So uh y- you certainly could make requirements. We could um we could add uh additional requests for more comprehensive programs, additional staff time, additional resources. But keeping in mind that each additional um level of diversion that's obtained will be incrementally smaller because it's the lower-hanging fruit is diminishing and the cost will will go up um significantly, especially on the commercial side if you're looking at organics.
So in in the larger collection uh containers, do you see more contamination in an every-other-week pickup for recyclables or in the green waste?
The reverse happens of what we're trying to address right now. So instead of there being an issue of not enough space for trash and the trash going into the recyclables container and in every-other-week recycling program, you see the additional recyclables. Once the cart is filled, most folks won't set a bag aside and start filling the bag and wait till the next week when their cart's emptied and then refill the cart. And even those who do, it's this constant uh battle to get back on track. So you, there's a lot of challenges with that where a lot of folks who are not dedicated to recycling are just going to toss the additional recyclables that could have been clean and recycled into their trash can because it's serviced on a weekly basis. There's also additional factors to the environment like the additional um wear and tear on the on the uh ground and and other um operational issues associated with an every-other-week program. But you will see recyclables that could have been cleanly recycled end up in the trash bins.
Well, and and it seems surprising to me that that you could request two blue bins. Um that's a tremendous amount of recyclable that you could collect over a two-week period of time and um your your collection vehicle will only be going through on a less frequent basis. So so how does that apply to the equation now?
If if you have two, say you have two ninety-six gallon blue carts and you you fill them up on an every-other-week basis. What happens is that you're doubling the volume of material that goes out to the curb. So the truck has to leave the route almost the halfway through because it fills up sooner and make more trips back and forth. So it actually ends up adding the number, not by a lot, but sometimes an additional truck or an additional route is needed in order to um break away from the route because it gets filled up sooner. So i- it's counterintuitive, but logistically, there's actually um additional costs associated with this program, especially if there's already a mature recycling program. If the very first time recycling's introduced to a community, they've never recycled before twenty years ago, um and you start with every-other-week and you build up, that certainly can work or you can continue. But to regress from weekly to biweekly is operationally challenging and would probably be pushed back strongly by CalRecycle because they're looking for weekly programs.
So so with that, there's an assumption that people would be then recycling more. Um in in your assumption, because the numbers are the numbers are the numbers today are not going to change dramatically over a course of of time. So we're collecting in uh our blue is sixty-four now. If we went to ninety-six, uh the volume increases. Um so I'm 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 a little, I'm a little off on on why there would be this dramatic um increase when we have uh actually increased our our volume size to build it to collect more. So do you see the quandary I'm in? Uh it it, you know, I'm I'm asking the questions, but all of a sudden now, I've got two full ninety-sixes um on the second week and that's probably not going to be the case. It's going to be um my blue bin and a family of of three currently and two dogs. My dogs don't recycle anything except for their, except for their dog food cans.
Nice.
I knew that was coming from Jackie. Yeah, but but um the the toter is is maybe half-full in in my family. Um average household in in Uba City is probably, you know, somewhere in in the vicinity of of three and four people on average. Um so, you know, I'm I'm looking at uh capacities and and trying to come up with a reasonable uh answer to myself. And I and going through the the documents, it's, I mean, it's difficult. It's difficult for me to get to to uh ninety-six gallons. It really is. It's it is becoming maybe a little easier, but but uh initially on off on first two reads of this um and and the hours spent on this, um it's it's a little, it's a little hard for me to get there because I'm, you know, again, I'm trying to use kind of what I see. Trucks go by, picking it up, I see how much. I know what my neighbors look like because, you know, we have a shared program in my neighborhood. Um if you go over on one, uh the neighbor shares theirs with you. Uh so that's that's how it how we keep things clean in our neighborhood. Um but maybe you could just answer briefly that that context.
Can I get a clarification or is the concern with the ninety-six gallon waste cart or with the ninety-six gallon recycling carts or all of the above?
They're recycling.
Recycling, okay. Currently, there are some households, in fact, many households, that are placing their excess trash into to the cart. So that's that's one piece of it. I, there there's a couple of issues. I actually live in a neighborhood um where we have ninety-six gallon recycling carts that are serviced every other week. Um and a three-person household with cat, but, you know. Um we we typically will fill up the cart um and then exceed the cart and try, you know, push it down or put the the cardboard boxes to the side. If if we could have an additional cart to yet to have the excess, that would increase the rates because you'd be looking at a lot of additional carts placed out um over, you know, all the different households or or the majority. So there is that cost there. Um the the other piece is say that, say you have a seventy-five percent volume if you do it weekly. So it'd be one hundred and fifty percent volume, so one and a half carts that are put out and placed out on that biweekly basis. So you're gonna have the trash, not the trash, the recycling cu- truck fill up two-thirds of the way down the current route that it's going. So what takes a lot of time for co- for trucks is not actually the the collection. I mean, they're they're on the the collection route for X amount of time. They fill up, they break away, they go back to transfer station or wherever, and then they come back and resume the route is typically how it goes. And typically, you want to set up a route so that, you know, they're doing full loads um and returning. Uh we actually um did, we ran a um study on this region's um recycling program, looking to see if an every-other-week program would work. And it turned out that you'd need one to one and a half additional trucks in order to um handle the breakaways, which is what adds the time. So i- is it major? No, I mean, that we're talking about one additional truck and spread out over the cost. It's not um, it's certainly not a a hill for me to die on. I mean, it's it's not that that major. However, I will say um you would likely get significant pushback from CalRecycle going to every-other-week.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm familiar with the ex, you know, the expedient collection of of um waste, especially the uh the blue bins. There there was one day I stand curbside wearing a blue jogging suit. I know, don't don't put this vision in your head. And uh I, it was fearful. I was very fearful. The driver was just gonna pick me up and take me out to the out to the dump.
Oh, boy. Or empty you out.
I'm sorry. They have meals at the dump and they can call it the dump then, but it's a transfer station when when things are going on, so. Thank you, Jackie, for correcting me on that. That's all I have.
Questions or comments from others at this time? Um, yes, if you have some more.
Yes, we're.
Yes.
Ma'am, on some of these um things I was reading, and this is just gonna be a basic question. Seems we talked about advantages to one um proposer over another, but some of them seem to be rather um neutral and um innocuous as far as beneficiary beneficial to a one country over or company over another. For example, where did we or you or whomever come up with the idea of um the maximum distance from city hall to the dump is five miles? Why can't it be six?
That is certainly at the council's discretion. Um that's, that is something that.
I'm sorry, did I say dump? What did I say?
Transfer facility.
We. Transfer facility, I'm probably not talking into the mic like I'm, but anyway, so that was arbitrary then?
The the intention, um the intention in in all of this, the intention is to serve the city and and the the ratepayers. Currently, the city has the benefit of self-hauling and they account free. You account for a certain amount of time that it takes to self-haul and that's the benefit. Say um say that there was a service provider that currently has um infrastructure in Sacramento and they have some sort of a plan to take it there. And a few years from now, maybe they'll have infrastructure that's closer. What we're asking them to do is to ensure that they are offering some sort of solution that provides the same benefit to the city. So because it would not be reasonable for city staff to self-haul to Sacramento. So we're looking to protect the interests of the city. Now, whether that's five miles or ten miles, that's certainly at your discretion. And typically, what would happen is that would be a question. We'd look at it and then we'd be able to announce to all the haulers, this is uh for, you know, item number this, three-point-two-point-five, it is now this. And everyone has the same opportunity to look at that and it's uh very, very common for there to be some some questions and a lot of them are innocuous. There are some that um that are just general and we see those. And that's, you know, that's that's fine and part of the process. But there is a process and a rationale for the process and the timing. And there's plenty of time within the process for those questions to be answered and for all proposers to have the same answer at the same time.
One more question, if I may?
Absolutely.
And uh.
We can, we can go to midnight. I'm kidding, but, you know, whatever it takes.
One more question. Um just talking, plenty of time built in for for feedback from uh proposers. How much time should we move forward? How much time should we move forward today? How much time will they have to get that feedback to us or to you?
Pull up the actual calendar. So if we were to release, we we allow a little bit of time after a council meeting to incorporate the direction of the council. And make sure that everything aligns between the documents, et cetera. Um so if we were to release on the tenth, um on the twenty-first would be the pre-proposal meeting. And really, at any point, questions can start coming in. Um but we have a cutoff for questions on November thirtieth. So that would be the last point in time when questions could come in. Um and then eh we typically. Our process typically, because we work on answering the questions throughout, we try and get them back as quickly as possible to to responders. Um we want them to have the best information possible so they can provide the best proposal possible. But we we make a commitment to get all responses by by December seventh. Now, keeping in mind that. They'll know that what ninety percent of what they need to do is, and we'll be moving forward on that. Um it allows some time for them, twelve days, for them to incorporate any changes that that might come up at the least. And that's a that's, this is our typical calendar that that we use and all. Um however, it's this again is.
That was my next question.
At your discretion. If you were to direct us to um to make some changes and that's what the city preferred and and I understand this is. Over the holidays as well, so there's um some consideration there. We we will adjust according to your direction.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm just interested in hearing what the other folks have to say, be their feedback, but thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I have I have one more que- I have one more question for you. Um we have a system right now. And the earlier you said, you know, we we you have a bigger uh bigger toters, now you're gonna be using a truck and a half, you know, and stuff like that. Well. We got a system right now that's working. They're doing great. Why if you give them a bigger total, why are they gonna fill it up more? Wouldn't it be exactly the same? Why is it gonna take a truck and a half? In order to do the job instead of just doing the same truck, they're just gonna have extra space in order to put stuff in. What for that extra holiday or whatever, because you got your holidays where it's gonna be extra work. There's the right now, Christmas, Thanksgiving, whatever, Fourth of July. They're using extra trucks, but the rest of the year, it's a normal day, just like it is today. It's a normal day. If we give them a bigger toter, why do you think they're gonna add more when it's it should be the same?
Yes, sir, I'm I I apologize for not being more clear. The extra time would be if it was every other week service. Not for, because as to your exact point, we expect the exact same volume of of waste on a weekly basis. But if it were to be every other week, that's when there'd be more material put out and so I I apologize for not being clear on.
Well, I can tell you right now, I would not want my gray dumpster, my my son in my house for two weeks.
Neither would I.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council members? Okay, I will uh kind of do some of mine here. Uh since you all have moved forward, um personally, um I would not wanna have bi-weekly service of any kind of it, period. Cause the green gets stinky, the gray gets stinky and uh I. While my wife and I do not do a lot of uh recycling because we don't need to, because we don't buy a lot of stuff to do that. The ninety-six, I understand, for families and stuff, uh they will toss um contamination into the. Uh recyclable, if their gray is full, if it's a thirty-two or a uh even a sixty-four, they will toss in their. Thus, the contamination levels that we have of over twenty percent approaching twenty-five percent, at least that's what I was quoted. Which is absolutely unacceptable in our community. So something's going wrong. Uh changing the the direction or, I mean, the outreach is phenomenal on our community about a right bin. Uh for the right thing. I mean, it's great. Uh so something is going wrong on that. It's either the people are refusing to recycle. Or um their bins are full and I can tell you, it's probably the bins are full of the thirty-twos because they're allowed to get a thirty-two. And they should have a sixty-four for their for the gray. Um you know, it's it's uh cheaper, so they're gonna do that. Uh so there we do need a remedy for that, which would be for me, um. I'm I've made it very clear to you and others uh that uh the sixty-four for the gray. And I don't care if it's a ninety ninety-six uh for the other two, but I do not want a fourth bin or another bin of anything else. Cause I don't know, I don't wanna have it around. I mean, a lot of people don't wanna have the three bins they have now. They'd rather be just toss it in because it's, put it in the corner, it's gone and it's out of the way. So it's taking up more space on their property and they're not gonna like that. So the bi-weekly service for me is just eh it's a no-go. Uh for consideration or even the recycle. It's just my thoughts. Um I've actually spent over one hundred hours on 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 this process. Uh definitions I've gone over three or four times. I've gone over all kinds of information uh. Kind of drove staff a little crazy on this on questions, but I'm gonna move into some of the things that I actually did. Have annotated on on some of my thoughts here. Okay, hit that one, see what it does. Okay, um which was the sixty-four ninety-six uh ninety-six. Um of course, the senior absolutely need to have that. There was no in the senior and the uh um. Lower income uh discount. There would no way I'd ever wanna remove that. Um. I had some other nuances which are my own thoughts. Okay, close that one. Moving on, uh. I think there's a collective services agreement or new enhancement items that actually is in the agenda for um for for discussion. Part of it was a contract term, ten-year term with two five-year extension options. I asked why? Why are we going from eight to uh eight uh four-four? And then I was reading on some of the legislation that they do reviews every five years on their legislation. So for me, it made sense to say, well, if legislation is gonna do that every five years, we might. Might wanna uh be consistent with the five-year review of the legislation that's out there. Um I can't remember, I think uh three forty-one is one of them they're always looking at again to uh. Increase the diversion rate that we need to do and that's another comment I have on that. Um. See, the default, um I really have trouble with the requesting um additional carts for free. Um I think uh that that could come up later as an as as something later um. The change I think that we would make go on sixty-four ninety-six ninety-six uh with a weekly service would. Go a long way and with education would go a long ways to remedy um the contamination at this point. Since our community is already one of the um better educated uh on recyclables. And uh to to go ahead and uh do the right thing. Um. And then on the commercial customer uh item regarding um having two bins, uh being at the at the same price. Well, um yes, you're driving to there. They may have two bins that are residents of the same thing. But it's the same situation when you're driving to a commercial, you you have the same amount of driving there if you have one. And all you're doing is dumping another. The driving is taken care of in that single one. So if they're gonna have a second one, uh charging the driving uh cost still on there, I I think that's unreasonable. Uh that there should be a discount based upon that. I know the goal is for them to get a regular uh bin size, but um. Uh they may not utilize all of the time that other one. And so to require a bin that would be even higher in cost. To them, I I think is unreasonable. Um and I did look at the uh rates that are currently being provided and. It would be a higher rate that would be um uh charged to the commercial that would have comparable to bin. Uh ninety-sixes uh for the next level of uh of a regular um uh roller. That's what I'm gonna call it. I can't remember what it is right now. So I I have trouble with that explanation because uh. I went through the math and I went through the stuff on that. Um. Sorry, I just have to go. I'm I ju- I decided to go through this uh to help answer some of this um. Uh the on-call service for illegal dumping is what we're asking for. Um one of the things that would help uh on that is. As you go along, we have um uh large or um. Free pickup for bulky items. Uh this community unfortunately has a problem like others where people uh they. Just dump it out somewhere uh and leave it there. If we have a an enhanced bulky item, uh which is part of the proposal and ideas. Enhanced bulky item, uh the probability of them uh leaving it in somebody else's yard or at the end of a road. Uh would would be reduced, we hope. Uh the suggestion is four per year to be allowed. Um I'm just kind of curious where that came from uh on that recommendation. Uh I know that uh. When you call in, the one actually isn't, I don't think is enough. I've never thought that it was enough. But uh every time we do something like this, uh the cost, overall cost of the contract goes up, so that has to be passed on somewhere. So I mean, where's the balance in in that? I and and that's gonna be vetted through this process. Uh I did wanna make a special comment here about this process is this way for full transparency. That was one of the requests that everybody had when they were here, when we're doing our policy decisions. Uh this is the transparent process. This is where everybody's gonna be able to get out there and say what they think of the basic um uh RFP. And so um that's where the transparency and uh and also this is a franchise. So it is a different kind of a process than than it would be on a normal RFP. That's at least that's what I. What I think is, because we're gonna be giving out this as a franchise, sole source pretty much, except for um recyclables. Okay, now I'm gonna move on to a couple other items here. Yeah, I'm long-winded, but I spent a hundred hours on this and I'm gonna gonna get it out. The timeline, yeah, really. The timeline, I I have been concerned about a little bit. Uh but one of our problems is is we're running into the holidays and how do we accommodate that and then go too long or whatever. Um I'm ready for see, you know, recommendations or suggestions from other members here as to whether they think it's uh adequate. But I will say that we city releases the 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 rough RFP, November tenth. Um then on December seventh, no. November thirtieth, which is twenty days, is the deadline for uh submitting written questions. Uh. That right there is a also a part of the time when the um. Propposers are gonna be developing, I'm gonna say, the easy or simp- uh uh the routine part of a um. A proposal. Then they wouldn't, when it's done, they're gonna be working on that and then. On the more difficult ones, when they need to come back and get their answers, they'll have an opportunity. Uh to adjust whatever they've already worked on with the answers from uh answers to the questions they had. So you know, they're gonna have a a longer time than uh to develop it than if you started fresh on that uh answer days. You're gonna already be working on a lot of it. Not gonna sit sit on your hands and wait till the answers come back before you start. That would be foolish for any any business. See what I have on the comment there. Okay. Yeah, those are both on change timeline. Okay. Okay, that was the cart one. We already got that taken care of. Um right now, um there are times when we put out bags for the green waste as an example. Um I'll go three weeks and not do much in the yard and then my fourth week I will uh fill up my green tote and put twelve bags next to it, which. Makes up for the whole month, but that's because that's, you know, I'm just going through and wiping out the yard. Um so really, I'm getting the value of the four, but all in one week. Uh I'm s- sorry about that. That's not the right way of doing it. Cause it impacts the uh haulers. Uh but uh you know, motivation uh is needed. To uh work and get it done. Questioning about the decomposable thirty-two gallon bags being provided perhaps. Um by um. A proposer to um. Be utilized as the extra, if they ever needed it, would be the thirty-two uh bags. Um and then be divided up into regions or whatever when they would pick those uh. And then, oh, excuse me, uh but so provision by the provider, that an idea to do that. Uh cause there will be to easy to to give decompose instead of the black ones like I use all the time that. They have to empty it out and stack them and that's lots of labor when they can take the green ones or light green color and toss them and they. Boom, it's all shredded up. So we might wanna look at an idea for that. Um. And also, I'd like to look at doing community special yard cleanup weeks. Um and then uh. Divide the community into regions and spread out the workload per um, how would you say, region? And that these people would know through outreach that this is gonna be your day for doing the extra yard work. This is your time to go out there to do that and uh like the first week, second week, third week, fourth week, and these people would know. This is the time and you have a a good standard as to where the workload is actually gonna be. That's just an idea that I thought of. And then, of course, the uh why the four pickups of the bulk items annually, that question? Okay, now the mileage uh question that was asked, um I actually did the map quest. And started figuring out where the transfer station, if something was gonna happen. And let's say that I live. In the corner of Sandborne and Bog Road. That's right at eleven miles from there to go over to the transfer station. And so uh uh limiting it to five miles doesn't make sense because that would actually. Uh put some uh an onerous uh situation on a any provider to have something within, you know, with our contract. So if you were to, I think we need to have closer to a within a um eleven mile uh radius from. From that because I mean, and then I just, I hit all the points and stuff and that's the furthest away that I could find from the transfer station. That uh uh that is, we are utilizing co- currently. So um the eleven mile came up on on those calculations. And then I'm also interested in definitely in a mail-in Sharps program and then the call to pick up Sharps program. That we've had trouble trying to develop a program for Sharps, you know, needles and diabetes and all like that um that people have. They, you know, don't want anybody to be uh vulnerable for that, working at the stations and stuff, uh transfer stations or anything. But a mail-in uh program and or um proposal of a call for pickup program. For Sharps. A lot of people with diabetes have a lot of that and medications for people. Also, uh as you stated, um January first, twenty twenty, we're going to be uh. No longer allowed to uh utilize ADC as part of the diversion percentage. And uh also they're talking about or have implemented with, I think it's three forty-one, maybe three forty-one, that's. Gonna be uh required to do a seventy-five percent diversion is uh eh gonna be uh coming into place. For certain, I can't remember the items and stuff, but certain categories. So they're going from fifty percent to seventy-five. Diversion of uh specific items. And with that, um but specifically on the composting. There's gonna be a lot of composting that's gonna be um perhaps thrown as the alternative cover that no credit is. How about a program that would um get the farmers involved or some of that could be diverted to. Farmland or things of that nature, cause so that uh and then also since the state of California is no longer um utilizing. Uh waste, woody waste and green waste for cogeneration, there's gonna be an explosion of that um need in this area, especially with farmers. Grinding it up and they're just putting it back in the ground and that destroys the ground for three years. It's it's horrible on uh on the ground on nutrients. Three to five years, because uh woody waste just rots. It doesn't uh decompose unless you have nitrogen with it. Farmers put nitrogen on, it's just gonna suck it right out of it. Yeah, I know, I have I have a lot of stuff here. Um I I but I eh as you can see, there's a lot involved in this. And and we're going to, I'm I'm gonna. Get out of this mode and just say there's a lot of process that I will be getting engaged um with up until the time. When all the comments are going to be available. I can tell you, um ecology representatives, I I can tell you, I read this and I said. Yep, that's exactly the same thing that I thought and almost. And almost every single one of them that are in there, I did identify and have an annotated note. On concerns of it not being um equal for everybody. So it's quite obvious that some of these things do need to be adjusted and it's. And they're not just for you, there are others in here that some of them, uh it's detrimental, like the one I was talking about, five miles and eleven miles. That was detrimental to uh anybody else coming in. So there's a lot of stuff in here that needs to be uh uh worked on over the next few weeks, questions and developments, um. So I will be devoting more time to it. And uh hopefully, uh we will, in fact, I know we will have a a great RF, final RFP when we're done. No, I'm not gonna go to midnight. I will ha- also say one other thing which um I'm very strong on. Um, I brought my own uh bill here from recology. And on this bill, it definitely has, of course, the uh the residential. Normal charge to twenty-seven, twenty-nine for my home for three months, then regulatory surcharge. Uh from October to December, the NPDS uh solid waste fees. Um, and then it has, of course, the balance, well, there are a significant amount of other fees, which are franchise, road fees. And other things of that nature which um um. There have been questions as to why the bill is so high and and some of those fees. Are built in or added to that twenty-seven, twenty-nine, which will actually part or part of that twenty-seven, twenty-nine. That I would like to actually have um line item identified for the co- community to know. What what money the city is getting to put towards its roads. Um, and I would like to that to be a, you know, perhaps a po- that's a policy change probably with the city. Members and so I'm putting that as to um which ones would be appropriate and how to do that is something I think we need to do. On a policy um uh issue based on that, um, and it'll. Staff will have something to say about that, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, Mister Mayor, I'm I'm not sure how best to proceed, I realize you haven't received public comment yet. Um, there have been um perspectives raised from each of you, some of you more than others. Um, and it and it needs to be something that you as a council, if you s- if you choose collectively. To amend the RFP as proposed, uh you need to collectively do that. Um, because I know each of you have strong individual opinions, but um you're going to need to af- probably after receiving public input, of course. Get to the point where you're deciding and making decisions on individual amendments and then uh voting on those. Uh because we uh will comment as desired of your counsel, but. Uh we're not necessarily going to amend this RFP based upon. The individual comments of the five of you that were raised and I I know each of you wouldn't want that either. You'd want that, you you want that to be a collective decision, so just as that's just a point of clarification, thank you.
With that, since we are gonna end up having to go into that um a little bit later, um, I would like to uh. Move into uh the speaker card. Time. David Kuhn.
Hello, uh Mister Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, my name's David Kuhn. Um, our business, I'm the general manager of Recycling Industries and. Our business resides at one forty Epley Drive, as a matter of. Simple math, Mister Mayor, we received this draft document seventy-two hours ago and somehow you've managed to spend a hundred hours on it. I hope you get some sleep after this.
It's uh these documents of uh background.
I hope you get some sleep, please, uh we we value your your at your best and when you don't get a lot of sleep, you're not gonna be at your best, so thank you. You know, uh in two thousand eleven. The City Council received a presentation by your uh city manager. About the need for a competitive environment and in that presentation. It was clearly articulated that a transfer station would better provide for a competitive environment. Recycling Industries has invested its own dollars at no cost to the ratepayer to that end. And we think that this process um of going out to bid and and certainly applaud you for getting to this point. And 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 our effort has been uh to to further that in and provide a competitive environment. We think that if we didn't have a transfer station, really, you know, there'd be no business in having a um a bidding process. To that end, we we welcome this process, we think it's it's needed, it's been a long time and. You know, uh as far as some feedback for each of you, I think the timeline is uh is pretty narrow, being that it's Christmas. And there's ex parte language in there, I don't know what that means, but. I can only imagine, I won't be able to say hi to you guys or something like that, I get a little concerned. If I can't say hi at Christmas, golly, you know, recycling industries, though, is not a proposer. We're a, we'd be a an auxiliary site for any proposer to dump at our facility. Um, we have some of the entitlements done and we've got a few more entitlements left. And we hope that that in our effort to provide something here that's gonna transform the rates, transform the service. And provide a close outlet for everybody can still continue. We think that uh, we think keeping the garbage regional is very important. I don't think exporting garbage outside the region would be the right way or or. We we, that's why we we think even with our transfer station, there's still a way for garbage to stay. In town and in the region of going to the recology landfill. So to that end, I I just look forward to what any input you can put and what we can do to fu- further that, so thank you.
Ron Roman.
Good evening, Mister Mayor and council members, thank you once again for giving us this opportunity to sit up here. And uh give us, give you some of our concerns and some of our uh questions. I have a couple, I've heard several comments tonight about new trucks, new totes. The same fees, weight fees, uh license fees, dumping fees. But I haven't heard anybody say anything about labor, okay, there's people co- that mean jobs here, there's forty people that live here in Yuba City. That work for recology, about forty percent of their business is here, there could be some lost jobs here. Okay, so I've seen in the RFP where it says that they may offer these people jobs. If they meet the requirements that they already have, cuz they're doing the work right now. Okay, what I'd like to see, since the new trucks are gonna cost about the same. The fees are gonna be the same, the taxes are the same, the road fees are sa- are the same. I'd like to see a proposal in there that they have a comparable wage package with these folks as well. They're gonna offer them the job, it shouldn't be a cut in pay. And from what I've heard from some of the other meetings, one of the ways that they can have a lower bid is minimum wage. And that is a distinct difference from bidding on trucks. Or totes or whatever the other, the fees, they're all gonna be the same. So I'd like to see something in there, apples to apples. Like everything else is, that these folks are offered comparable pay for what they're receiving today, if there is a change. So that's what I would like to see, uh we represent approximately a hundred workers out there right now with operating engineers. So if there's any questions uh regarding that, feel free to call me in our office here in Yuba City, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Ron, I I would like to make a comment on this, just go ahead and stay there for a moment. Um, the area you're speaking of in the scope um requested is uh three point six point three on personnel. Um, I actually had a note on that, uh employee benefit compensation comparable to what is uh currently provided. That's the notation I already have here to go through the process. And then also, on here, it's um three, uh an additional change I would like to have, actually is in here, is three point six point four. And then uh change the that original one for that to another number. Is comply with AB sixteen sixty-nine California Labor Code. Uh ten seventy through ten seventy-two on hiring existing employees. That is legislative law, that is existing that where they would uh. Uh current provider also would provide uh current employees hourly rates and benefit package uh. Um commiserate with what's already there and but also to make sure. That the current provider gives out um what they have to make sure. Uh fair competitive bidding process is uh insured for everybody to uh compete. Uh and that's all part of the of some of the legislation that's out there now, so that that compliance I did uh. Take note that is not in here, that needs to be done, the notation usually is. Uh in in this, it says comply with all the laws pertaining to all of this and that and the other thing and it's like, no. I I'm, here's a specific item that uh will ensure at least uh some of what you've said so far. Now to go to the next step and say uh that we would do it as a policy. Um, en- enforcing uh some of the benefit package um as close to the uh current is um as there is. Um, we can discuss that later, um and um then the. Package would have to be released by um current provider for them to be able to analyze and see if they can still. Be competitive with a com- uh with a commiser- uh. Come on, get the right word. Anyway, a package that is uh uh competitive or or close to what uh they are comparable, there it is, phew, comparable package.
In the spirit of apples to apples, I think that's fair.
And that's what part of my notes here.
Thank you.
Mike Leggins.
Good evening, Mike Leggins, general manager of Recology Yuba Sutter and also a resident of Yuba City. Um, I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak, I know we've uh presented a letter to you and. We we feel like a lot of those concerns are helping to level the playing field, so to speak, and. A lot of it is just designed to uh, you know, maybe save a little bit of time, but. We're very interested in the process and we wanna continue to um, you know, be a part of the process, so. We appreciate you accepting the letter, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you for sending it to us. Okay, um Lisa Avila.
Hi, Lisa Avila with Republic Services and we also are very eager to. Pre- present a proposal and respond to this RFP. Um, I think there's been a lot of time put into it already and it looks like there's gonna be a little bit more time put into the scope of work. Um, we do have a little bit of concern over the timeline and we would like. Um, we think it would be best to have the bids due at the end of January. And also have thirty days in between the time that city staff sends out all responses to questions. And then the bids are due. So those two two changes in the timeline, we would like to see, but we're really excited to put the bid together.
That would be.
Any questions?
No, that there, we need to uh, so where on that timeline specifically? Because on the left side is the milestone wording, so where would you? Between which one of those and the other would you like to have, cuz I know some of them cross over.
So between the December seventh, when the city issues all the responses to the bidders, to the questions that they've had. Between that date and the proposal due date should be thirty days.
So that'd be January seventh.
But with the holidays, we think it's more appropriate to have it towards the end of January.
You're not gonna work Christmas? I wouldn't either.
Any questions?
Yep, you do. Salvatore Congolio. Let me know it, cuz it's it's, that's what I see, C O N. G L I O or T O.
Salvatore Cornilio.
Co- oh, there are the I.
Salvatore Cornilio.
There is an I next to it, but it's.
The I, the.
Hidden.
The G is silent, so Salvatore Cornilio, group manager with Recology. Uh appreciate the level of detail that the mayor and council has put into this, uh it's a large contract, right? Um, it's a very important piece of the city, the operation of the city. I didn't, my comments were addressed through some of the observations that the mayor and Sean and others had today. Uh, we agree with the schedule, uh we think that's an appropriate schedule, it seems to be pretty standard. Uh, just like a few other things that are uh to address some of uh council member Preet's uh concerns earlier about the process. Typically, we've seen the deal points and scope of services presented to council before releasing the draft RFP. That's the only reason why we wanted to comment on some of the draft, just to get some of our ideas, expertise. A few kind of landmines and things that could potentially. Impact the rate payer in a negative way, but we understand the process and that there's a timeline and. So we're not, you know, we're okay with with how it's going, so um thank you for the opportunity, so.
That's it, I will give one oppor- more opportunity for somebody to come up and speak. Address their thoughts. Okay, now I'm gonna bring it back to the council and we have. A few items that that look like they would be policy and some of them look like um has to do with the timeline. Um. One policy, uh one timeline thing is here, the policy item and I I I missed missed some of the other items and you guys can help me. Counsel can help me get uh separate out the policy items that we would need and maybe staff, if there's anything um. That we need to do policy-wise to make, wise to make thing uh changes according to our comments, uh did you take note on some of those or?
Uh there there were a lot and so I'd suggest that if there's anything. That um you think that needs to change in the RFP, uh this would be the opportunity, obviously, to raise that. Um, the specific thing that I I do ask of you, now, uh the senior rates that were risen, uh Vice Mayor did ball raise. Those are in the RFP, I just went back and checked in the um draft franchise agreement, that's included in there. Um, there's the the cart size matter, just to confirm whether or not you'd like to. Go with a sixty-four or ninety-six gray can or some variation on the other cans too, that that's a decision point for you. Um, the timeline, of course, and then the two other things that I have written down. Um, are the uh second cart for commercial uh that uh. Sloan Vaskas offered one perspective and the mayor offered a different one. Uh, so absent any direction from the council, otherwise it would remain in the RFP. Where uh it's an incremental cost of carts in order to um um, you know, not. Encourage carts at commercial, multiple carts at commercial areas. And then the other is the the decomposable uh bags, um which, you know, that's something, of course, Sloan Vaskas could comment on. It might be problematic just in terms of the cost of service, uh it might increase cost of service to folks, is would be uh initial thought. Um, beyond those, I I do not have others written down.
Before we move on there on the disposable bags, there's already um a three dollars and ninety cent, ninety-five cent charge, I think, per bag. Actually, he's in there, but it is not exercised, I think, very often. Uh, probably because uh most people uh don't um do it the way I do it. Because of that, but um I know that there is a charge on that chart of about three ninety-five per bag, uh that is thirty-two gallon that is set out. Okay, everybody else, go ahead.
I read um a- as I looked at at the rate part to this, um. I don't recall anything regarding low income uh being in there. It it's in there? Those.
Sorry, it's yeah, it's senior, uh, senior and low income, not just low and full loans, sir.
That's exactly the the direction that I was going to suggest is uh even combining all of that into an income level. Not by age category. Uh, because there are many seniors in our community uh that are rather well-to-do. And this is not something where they've already paid their dues. Um, this is a an ongoing uh use of facilities. And and I think that if they have the ability to pay, they should pay and and not be uh given a a price break just because of age. Um, it should be in an income level. So that's probably where.
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, it is a eight point three low-income senior citizen maximum service rate. So it is the two combined.
And and I appreciate that because at some point, uh, my eyes have crossed uh a number of times while or reading this. Um, I don't have a hundred hours into it, but but I certainly um have fallen asleep twice. In in the attempt to digest it. Additionally, and and I'd like um to have this added for consideration. Is citing a local transfer station on this side of the of uh the Feather River. Within a sphere of Yuba City's influence. Uh, to build it, to uh take our local uh trash in. And and begin the initial uh process. It doesn't need to be immediate, but there we could certainly talk about a timeframe uh that would allow a proposer. Uh, to be able to cite something um on this side for the ongoing process. Um, I think it's critical um that if we do that, um, that there be some flow control. Um, measures put in place for that. And um, I think another discussion point, and and that would be the the timeline. Looking at how we move forward and maybe some extensions in there, not going against what. The consultants have have provided, uh, but certainly trying to be uh aware of of how much goes on in our community during the holidays. Um, and and certainly an attempt um to be as fair and open and as transparent as we possibly can through the process.
Sir, with regard to the local transfer station, um, something that your council can have a discussion on. Would it be something that you'd want to provide um direction in the RFP where you maybe state that, you know? That it would be looked upon beneficially uh for people to propose a local transfer station? Or would it be more, or you're thinking more of an absolute?
We could probably utilize more information from Sloan Vazquez uh directly to that subject matter. But in my estimation, it would be um, it would provide on the on the long-term uh better rate. Uh, solutions for our community to be able to have something local. Uh, that that our trips would be reduced in distance and time. And and therefore, collection would be uh more efficient. And that's just, again, from from a councilman's perspective. And and knowing how far uh some of these vehicles have to travel, the type of vehicle or type of traffic they have to travel in. And just simply trying to cut down uh miles traveled through the process of collection. So I would like to see it be something that that is fairly concrete in a timeframe. That would allow uh for the process for any proposer uh to probably come in and and take a look at it. I know a number of the, I mean, currently, uh, not not to speak for Recology, but they've looked at at locations, possible locations. Um, Republic has indicated they've looked at at different locations and certainly we have um someone else in the room. That currently operates uh a like facility. So.
Okay, uh, I guess depending upon the the complete list, uh, maybe it would be best for us to come back at another time. Um, frankly, probably would be December by the time we are able to um have all these questions addressed adequately. Because I don't want to just do it. I mean, just because as as we're moving forward, we're uh our next meeting's two weeks away. And then we're into the month of uh month of December. And that's not meant to persuade or dissuade. That's just a matter of fact. Um, but I I do want to make sure we adequately respond to your concerns.
So you're just trying to put the onus on the new mayor to have to run the.
Yeah, happy birthday. That's right.
Well, that's right.
You know, I I was not thinking of that, sir, now that you've gotten me into trouble.
Real good.
But uh, but you know, we can certainly do that. Uh, you know, there's 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 time available. I don't want to push you through this process. Yeah, I mean, either that, you know, my time is your time. We can stay here as uh for the time and we have representatives from Sloan Vazquez and we can address it now. Whatever is the pleasure of your council.
What is the pleasure of the council on this? And so so what would be the basic um final proposal and uh idea, setting up within a certain timeline? Or a fixed um, the goal would be to have a fixed transfer station within the sphere of influence of Yuba City?
I mean, that would be the, conceptually, that would be the the best. Um, and there could be one of two ways that that could go. And that would be um that the proposer would would build, would permit, build and and cite that. Uh, or cite, permit and build uh that facility. Um, that that would be one uh thing that would just take time. Um, secondarily would be uh to utilize existing facilities uh in the uh intermediate period of time. Um, or just simply looking um over the course of uh the contract. Um, being able to have a a facility here that then at the end of twenty, twenty-five years could be turned over lock, stock and barrel to the city of Yuba City. Not that we necessarily, and that's a uh certainly everyone's uh decision point on this council. Um, that we could end up being the the owner of that property, not that I necessarily want to be the owner of a transfer station.
Don't.
I didn't say that.
Uh, to the mayor.
Yes.
Okay, Arnaldo, I'm going to ask you this because they're talking they'd like to have a transfer station in the in the sphere of the city. Do we have any property at this time where that is possible or in the future? Is there anything lined up in the future where we could have something like that in the sphere of the city influence?
Um, mayor, city council members, we in theory could, however, it all depends on the exact location. Um, I think it would be speculative at this time to state that that there's one ideal location over another. Um, as long as the zoning code permits it, then obviously we would have to go through the process. Uh, the proper entitlement process, which is more than likely going to be a conditional use permit or a use permit. And then also we have to go through the proper um procedures pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. There are different levels of SEQA review. The most intense or the most thorough review is obviously an environmental impact report. The second one would be a some form of negative declaration and the third being a cat exempt. Um, any transfer station is probably going to require a very thorough review in terms of uh, in terms of SEQA. To ensure that any environmental impacts or uh potential environmental impacts are thoroughly assessed. So with that being said, the short of it is, yes, there are locations. Um, however, any location's going to have to be thoroughly reviewed and we'll have to review it upon the merits of the project and its specific location.
And one more, Arnaldo, I won't hold you to it, but what kind of timeframe we looking at?
It largely depends on the exact location and the environmental um and the environmental process. Any environmental impact report pursuant to SEQA can easily take between twelve and sixteen months. Um, any EIR would be uh, we would commission uh or we would go out to bid. Uh, so we would go through the RFP process. Um, we would have to retain the services of a professional environmental, uh, either an environmental uh firm or a planning firm that specializes in EIRs. Um, quite frankly, we don't have the expertise when it comes to transfer stations in uh, transfer stations in-house. They are, um, they're extremely detail-oriented. There's a lot of analysis that has to go into it. And uh, for that reason, we would suggest that we go out to an outside firm to assist us with that process.
And last question, would this be the cost of the person that's going to win the bid here in the near future? Would this be the cost of the city doing all this process, going through this to get to the tour we need to have a transfer station put in the community? Would these costs be on the whoever gets the bid or would this be us?
That would be the cost in in terms of whoever applies. Um, the cost for the preparation would be borne by an applicant, not necessarily the city. And that's in long-term standing with 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 not only Yuba City's standard operating procedures, but to my knowledge, almost every city that I can possibly think of.
Okay, so more cost on the bill for the taxpayers of the community in the near future if this goes through? If that's what council's asking for?
Perhaps.
If that's what council's asking for?
Perhaps.
Okay.
It all has to do with uh if it fits into their ability to um lower it, raise it, whatever the services are. It's all up in the air.
Uh, through the mayor.
It's a problem.
Through the mayor, I I think I think without analysis. Um, it would be unfair uh for anyone to suggest it would increase rates. Uh, when in fact it could have just the opposite effect. Um, and we would need to see some of the study material that Sloan Vazquez could provide to us. To be able to make a qualified determination of what that would be on an ongoing basis.
Thank you, Councilman. That was.
That's all I need.
Okay, any other um items uh the staff has uh? That would be you would you identified?
This is your opportunity. I mean, I I I I don't know what else to say. I mean, you you, like I said, you you need to propose amendments. Uh, vote on those amendments or go with what you've got or preferably maybe have a study session, if you want to have a study session on this. Um, the reason it's structured in the way it is is because this uh RFP as designed. Gives the flexibility to the proposers to design the services in the way they see fit. That said, if there's a policy decision of your council, which is rightful of your council to make. That says, no, we'd we'd like to see a a transfer station within the city, you can absolutely do that. Um, and like I said, I I Chris, if you, please, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and commenting. Um, if you feel that it would provide, you'd need more time to develop that analysis. Uh, to understand the cost implications. Um, I I'm not asking you to just provide a snappy answer. Thank you.
Yes, sir. As the city manager said, it the the RFP is structured in such a way for any proposer to come forward with their best proposal in service of the city. That they believe would meet the city's needs in uh service, price, um, environmental impact, et cetera. Uh, we typically do not, um, we are not typically very prescriptive because each proposer has different assets. And if we are too prescriptive, we can eliminate opportunities for those proposers to come forward and participate. So we typically want to include as many proposers as possible so that we can see those solutions. And truly understand what's what's in the best interest of the city. In other words, if if we were to put very tight parameters on a certain area, you may only have two proposers that are qualified. That limits the field. So we tend to allow more room for those creative solutions. And sometimes they do provide cost savings or provide a solution we hadn't realized was even available yet. Um, however, if if the council were to um want to see the impacts of having some sort of a requirement for the um citing of of a facility in a certain area. Um, or the design-build option with the the city taking it, that would require some additional analysis and and an understanding of of impacts. Um, so we we would need to go back and and conduct some analysis, research and come back to you with that information.
A question here then to the council. Um. Our comment, so this would be if we were to include. That the bidders could present or whoever is going to be doing proposals. A placing a transfer station within the city limits as part uh and within a certain timeline. That would need a policy decision to uh by this council. Um, to allow that or encourage or or not get in the way of that type of a proposal. Is that correct? I'm just wondering, is that would that would be a policy decision on our part since typically we don't encourage stations like that. But then we don't typically discourage it, but we'd have to make it to where.
Uh, I'm sorry, if you could just restate it, uh, I just didn't catch everything you said.
Yeah, because it's going up there right now still. So currently, we're uh, we don't encourage transfer stations within the SOI. But this would be actually a policy change by the council giving staff direction to um. What would be the terminology? Um. Encourage it to be done through the process?
I if if.
How would I put that?
You could do that. Oh, I, yeah, I mean, you could say that you could. Um, if you put requirements in there to that extent, I'd want you to at least know the financial implications of it.
Right.
Um.
Which would be the analysis that we would.
It it would, or you can just, you know, include it as an option and say, you know, we'd like to see uh included as part of it. Uh, the option of putting a transfer station and, you know, put frankly, the onus on the bidders.
And that's where I was trying to get to.
Okay, there you go.
Was put it on to them to, if they think they can do better with doing that.
Yeah.
Within a certain length of years to get it in there, um, put it on them to present that.
That's certainly.
Then we would hold, we would hold their feet of the fire on that very strongly.
Um.
So I I don't know. That's kind of a risky.
Is that something, Ms. McAfee, that's doable or would you prefer another approach from your experience?
We frequently include language that says the council is interested in um X solution. Or proposals are encouraged to um provide a solution for for X. Or um, you could say it would be favorably looked upon, or you could just leave it neutral, saying we'd be interested in in seeing that. And that way, um. You have the opportunity to understand the impact on the rates that that action would take. And then make a decision from there, deciding if that impact, positive or negative, is is one that you want to move forward with. Um, there are a lot of open questions here. However, the RFP is structured in such a way to allow for all of these questions to be um responded to, if possible, by each proposer. By them putting their best foot forward. And then once all of their best proposals are on the table. Um, you would have the opportunity, say, if one proposer offered a solution that your preferred proposer, that that the the proposer you were selecting did not. At negotiations, we could say the council's interested in this and it was offered at that. We'd like for you to include this. This is truly a negotiation procurement versus a bid. There's a lot of flexibility built in so that you can. And so that you don't have to forecast into the future every possibility. You can see what's available and then decide how you'd like to move forward.
Thank you.
Um, with that being said, in the proposals, can we, you spoke about an alternate um method as well. So can we ask for the proposal of one including that as a as an alternate way? Um, so that they can bid two different ways in the same bid process to say, this is how it would be as existing. But if we were to use this transfer station or five years from now, this is the other option, these are what the rates would be.
You certainly could do that. You may receive a question from some proposers saying, if I'm. You may receive a question from some proposers saying, if I'm unable to provide that second or alternate, am I still allowed to be responsive to the, you know, initial and, you know, again, typically, we, we like to see as many options as, as possible, but you, you certainly could do that if, if, if you were to prefer.
But with the terminology to say the desirable way would be this way, so when we look at our criteria, we can add the points towards those that we get the bids with the desirable way.
And with that said, each of the attorneys for each of the proposers are going to put ironclad language in saying that they have very little control over the SEQA process, over the permitting process. I can think of a city right now that a building was contractually supposed to be built like three years ago and it's still not up and running because of delays, so there would be a lot of back and forth there to ensure that they weren't held to something that they did not have full control over.
Right, right.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to, I don't make a motion, I don't want to make a motion or whatever, a suggestion, then we'll see if it goes to a motion. We have a lot of amendments on here, I don't think everybody kept track of everything. I'd like to make a suggestion that we have a study session, get all of our questions answered, our amendments done and get this wrote up and have it done and maybe come back the second meeting in January and try this all over again with, with all the changes and then go onward from there. Well, the amendments that we have, because we have a whole bunch of amendments, we all have changes that we would like to bring. I mean, it's the holiday season, the first meeting in December is a holiday for us, more or less. I mean, it's been a year, what's another month?
It has to do with the timing of somebody being able to fulfill the requirements that will be put upon them, another month is, is...
Well, we'd have to change that up there also, I mean...
No, the end, the end of the contract is the end of the contract, so they have to have time to be able to develop their services.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
My personal preference is I'm not interested in a study session. What I'm interested in is being able to move this process to where the proposers can have this in hand with a reasonable period of time in which to conduct their business and put together the best rate package and services for our community. I am interested in seeing if we can have some of our answers or have some of the answers that we've asked for tonight and possibly come back at our very next council meeting and with the goal of setting a, a new set timeline with some of the concerns that have been raised by various interested parties, doing some modification to the, to open that timeline just a little bit in that January schedule, but trying to stay as close as we can to the, to the current timeline, again, with, with some openings in that. And we should be prepared at that meeting to set forth policy based on discussions tonight and build to, to come to a resolution in which they can work with.
Okay, I, I think I understand what's being said here, so we would, our next meeting, which is the 20...
First.
First, we would have this come back to us with the policy items that we have or the items that we have that would take a policy decision by this body and then the RFP would go out with those policy modifications and also some of the RFP modifications that we have discussed and maybe hopefully have clarified what they actually are, so.
Yeah, and, and then a slight change in the timeline that would open up the center of that timeline by an additional two weeks. So that, that was being kind of asked for across the board, but that would, that would also give an additional roughly 28 days or so into the whole process.
December 7th, Tim?
Yeah.
December 7th. Yeah, but December 7th's not a meeting, more than, are we going to have a meeting? I mean, we're having a meeting, but are we going to have a...
That's staff response, we don't...
Oh.
Right.
That has to do, right, this time, so we can call a special meeting if we wish for that.
Sure, put it back on the new, on the new incoming mayor.
Sorry, mayor.
Yeah.
Well, through the mayor, I, I kind of jotted down some new timelines just to make it a couple of weeks difference.
I actually deleted mine.
So if we, if we go with the November 21st meeting, come back with strong proposals with the feedback that we received tonight, city releases the RFP then November 29th, then the RSVP for deadline for pre-proposal meeting would be December 7th. Mandatory meeting would be December 14th. Deadline for written questions, December 27th or somewhere around that week.
Now, city hall's closed for a week between Christmas and New Year's.
So we can do January 5th.
Okay.
January, we can have that meeting. Traditionally, that first meeting in January is canceled if you're talking about a council meeting.
No, this would be a Thursday, actually, January 5th would be like a Thursday.
That's for their questions.
Their questions, yeah.
Yeah, to answer their questions.
And then from there, we can go, what, another two weeks or so, right, to review those?
We were usually doing, on our timeline, it was 10 days to review, pretty much 10 days.
Yeah, so if we do the 5th of January, then it would be the 15th would be the city will issue in response written questions by January 15th and then have proposals due by the first part of February, that first week.
Sometime, so what, what day would be?
So either February 2nd, February 5th, 6th, somewhere there. If you want to make it a Tuesday, it would be a February 6th.
So which one are you on that? Proposals by...
Proposals do by.
4:00 PM on...
February 6th is what you're saying.
February 6th.
Do we have somebody writing all this down, Steve?
I got it all right here, man.
Just proposed dates, so if everybody's okay with that, we can go and then from the February 6th, then it would be the city request clarification for proposal, so give ourselves, what, two weeks?
Yeah, that's three weeks according to that thing there.
So that would be February, so like February 27th?
Yep. And then you got 10 days in between from there?
Yep, and then that would be March...
Well, actually, you got three weeks in between each one.
So it would be the second week in March, third week in March or something?
Yeah, and then that would be, say, March 8th.
That would work.
There you go.
It would work, okay.
So we'll certainly...
Dates and numbers, she lives by that.
We'll bring these back for you at your next meeting.
We know, we know the skills that each one of us has.
I live by a day planner.
Yeah, and we, we know, we know that, so, and that's actually close to the one that I deleted, unfortunately, I hit the wrong button on here. So that's a recommendation, is that...
I'd move the items, move the items as discussed with the timeline amended as been prepared and discussed just previous to this motion.
So just as a point of clarification, in order for us to, you know, the reason I said December before, I can meet November 21st if and only if all of the comments are raised on the RFP. What's not going to work well is if we come back in two weeks and I've got answers to all the questions raised this evening, only to find another multiple of questions and it's okay. And if you need more time to review it, I just want to make sure that when we have that meeting, that staff has adequately responded to the questions and concerns you've raised.
Right.
And so my ask in order to meet that 21st deadline is that any concerns that you have that, that are provided either this evening or in short order tomorrow and I'm sorry to be so blunt about that, but I really want to meet your goal, but I don't want to have a 21st meeting that's not as productive as you deserve, so.
In other words, RFP are to the fire now on that one, which we accept that challenge. I do.
And I'll second that motion from Councilman Buckland.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're going to be bringing this back with hopefully all the policy and different things that we requested within the RFP.
We have a couple of things, but...
Then it'll be your turn to start tearing the RFP apart.
Sorry, I didn't think happy birthday.
Yeah, well, by, oh, yeah.
I gotta go to the diner.
Happy birthday right here.
Yeah, happy birthday, Preet.
Thank you.
Preet's birthday today. She said no singing, though.
Yeah, you don't need that.
Steve, are we going to make sure that these folks get the RFP, the new one after the 21st? The one, so what we would see...
They'll be...
They will get them sooner than we gave to them this time?
There'll be no amended RFP.
Pardon?
There's no amended RFP, there's just your points that you've raised and responses to them.
Okay, so they'll get them...
When the agenda goes out.
Oh, so it's when the agenda goes out, okay, so that's why, 72 hours.
I think we're all on the same page as far as what we want in there.
Okay, thank you.
From the discussion that we just had, it's just working it right and putting it in the right.
All right, so now you know, you just...
Shoot, everybody's gone. That cleaned out, the good people are here. Chief?
Okay.
Protect us?
I need to get my computer back open so we can finish this meeting here.
Yeah.
Luckily, I have...
That's right, we're not done yet.
Nope, we're not quite done. That one was so hard to us, we're all ready to jump ship and run out of here.
We started shutting down.
Okay.